I'll call this meeting of the Salem City Council to order. We're going to have a work session this evening. And we'll begin with a roll call.
Counselor Kaiser.
Present.
Counselor Anderson.
I am too.
Counselor Nanki.
I am here.
Counselor McCoy.
Present.
Counselor Osick.
Here.
Counselor Hoy.
Here.
Counselor Cook.
Here.
Counselor Lewis.
Here.
Mayor Bennett.
Here, thank you. And would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Counselors, do any of you have any comments you want to begin with before we launch into this project this evening? Anything you wanted to bring up?
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. Counsel, tonight is your initial opportunity to set your policy agenda for 2018. The actions that will make progress within the policy issue areas from the strategic plan. The policy agenda will communicate to staff and the community and provide direction on aligning resources towards the policy areas in the strategic plan. Our hoped-for or desired outcomes from tonight will be a policy agenda for consideration at an upcoming council meeting, tentatively February 12th. And again, the policy direction on resources, staff time, times of our boards and commissions, council's time. The actions that we will be going over this evening are from the work groups that each of you were part of and the work groups that did a deep dive into the actions that will advance the policy issues. Actions that require resources, either staff, council time, budget. Tonight, you will be discussing and providing guidance on those actions, balancing those actions within the financial and budgetary context that has been shared with you before. Really, the question for you tonight is, are we on the right track? As far as the format for tonight, we have at your seats a one-page, it's actually a two-page summary of the strategic plan, including the actions that were identified by the work groups. And then a one-page cheat sheet for the five actions that we'll be presenting this evening. The five actions that are being presented to you this evening are actions that staff believes would benefit from city council discussion and direction because the action was not fully developed by the issue work group. The action has changed or evolved. Or it was not, an action not specifically discussed by a work group. For those actions underway or still in progress, you have in your packets a report. The policy issues with a presentation this evening are from the areas of sustainable services, economic development in downtown, vision for growth and development, environmental action, and affordable housing, homelessness, and social services. Also Courtney Knox-Bush will be providing a short report, short summary of the residential satisfaction survey, which is also in your packet. I do want to emphasize that staff is here and we're able to adjust if there is an action item that you would like to see or have discussion. And it's not one of those items that we've set up for presentation, please let us know. Again, staff is here and is prepared to talk about any of the action items. I want to emphasize that these action items tonight are from your previous work. And Brian Scott, the facilitator that's helped us, that's helped you with the strategic plan, will be taking you through those here in a moment. But I do want to emphasize, these are actions that came from you. These are actions that came from the council work groups. Staff has evaluated those. We've looked at those through a lens of organizational capacity and financial need. We've also looked at them in terms of a logical sequence, an order of approaching these actions. So again, tonight is your opportunity to help, well, not to help, it's your opportunity to set your policy agenda for 2018. Those actions that will help advance the policy, the strategic plan, policy areas. This is not, I guess, a one-and-done. This is part of an annual cycle of planning, implementation, and evaluation. And it's certainly not a all-encompassing strategic plan yet. This, I think, will take us several years to really have it be a plan, a document, a process that will guide policy decision-making and organizational resources. With that, I would ask that we turn over the meeting to Brian Scott.
Great. As Brian takes over, I'm going to just lay out a couple of things for you, just so you know this. Number one, I want to get approval of the additions and deletions.
Just root them.
Okay. We'll just put them into the record, okay? And also, the manager mentioned that we may have some interest in putting some other priorities on the table. I'm going to just suggest this. You can certainly move separately if you'd like to, but I'd suggest that Item Five, Council Manager Comment, gives us an opening to bring those items to the table. It'll also have taken us through the whole program for the evening and allow you then to see how this all fits together. Does that, does that sound okay to everybody? And at that point, if you have things you want to put on the table that you feel are missing or that you want to get very clearly identified, I'll take them then at that time and we can move forward. Is that, I think that lets us move through the program a little more smoothly then. Good. Brian, you want to take over? Yell if you have problems.
Great. Is this working, this microphone?
Yep.
Okay, good. Good evening, Counselors and members of the public. I'm Brian Scott and acted as the facilitator during the strategic planning process. And it's my pleasure to be here with you tonight and try and help facilitate a discussion of the beginnings of the council policy agenda, as we said we were going to do at the end of the strategic planning process. I want to take just a few minutes right at the beginning to remind you about the strategic plan that we all worked on so hard last year. Tonight, our agenda is to walk through a proposed council policy agenda that includes priority-based budgeting, a vision for growth and development, a greenhouse gas inventory, a sobering center, and high-speed Internet downtown. Also in your packet were action updates and other information, including the citizen survey, that we're not planning to present those updates. Courtney will speak briefly about the citizen survey. And then we'll have a chance for public comment and the council and city manager comment that the mayor just mentioned. As a reminder, the strategic plan process, we spent about 18 months, ending right at the end of last year. And we went through a situation assessment about what the city government is doing now. We worked on a strategic plan where we articulated mission, vision, values, and goals for the next five years. And then an important piece of that was transitioning to a council policy agenda where we would identify items from the strategic plan for emphasis each year as we're moving forward. And that's what we're doing here tonight. The vision that we identified was that Salem is a safe and livable capital city with a sustainable economy and environment that's open for all. The mission was that the city provides fiscally sustainable and quality services to enrich the lives of present and future residents and the quality of our environment, neighborhoods, and the vitality of our economy. We identified values or central tenets about how the city government does business, which were opportunity, compassion, responsiveness, and accessibility. And then the strategic plan identified seven focus areas that are kind of leading us into the conversation tonight. They were a vision for growth and development, affordable housing, social services and homelessness, economic vitality, critical infrastructure, fiscal sustainability, public transportation, and environmental action. The vision for growth and development was just that, to develop a comprehensive, long-term vision for future growth and development in Salem that has community participation, which had two key components, conducting a citywide visioning and updating the comprehensive plan. And one of those items is on the list for tonight for further discussion. And then affordable housing, social services, and homelessness had two items. Implement a housing-first strategy to provide housing security for Salem residents and accessible health and social services for Salem residents. And the sobering center was one of the points under that, and that's on the list for tonight. Economic vitality had two parts, a greater survival rate for small businesses, growth of existing businesses, and attraction of new businesses. And a vibrant downtown with low commercial vacancy, improved public amenities, and high-quality housing that meet the needs of residents of all ages and incomes. And one of the items under that was high-speed Internet downtown. That's one of the items on the list for tonight. Critical infrastructure was simplifying and streamlining the city's infrastructure and master planning to better align city council and community goals for the development and maintenance of a robust infrastructure program. And that had two parts about asset management program and the general obligation bonding. And then fiscal sustainability was aligning city services and available resources and maintaining a fund balance for the future. And the first item under that was redesigning the city's budget process. And that's one of the items on the agenda for tonight. Public transportation was a public transportation system that meets community needs. And environmental action was preparing a community-wide environmental strategy. One of those bullets was a climate action plan, and the other one was a greenhouse gas inventory. And that's one of the items for tonight. Counselor Anderson.
I'm not sure, Mr. Scott, if you want us to talk. Oh, yeah, sorry.
I hate anybody to miss what I just said.
It was brilliant.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Started with "I'm not sure."
Yeah, and that's the brilliant part. I'm not sure if you want questions now or you want questions when we get into it.
Why don't you go ahead and ask?
Okay. I'm looking at the economic development of vibrant downtown. And I'm specifically looking at explore the possibility of bringing city-provided high-speed Internet to Salem, which is the goal. But when we get into the discussion of Wi-Fi and high-speed Internet, we're talking about just downtown. So maybe when we get to that actual breakout, discussion of the Wi-Fi, we can talk about that downtown versus citywide.
It's on the list for discussion tonight. So that would be a great time to get into that. So tonight, moving into the agenda, and I'm going to stop talking here in just moments. I know that's the moment you've all been looking forward to. So we're going to move into the council policy agenda. And we have in the next section of the meeting, we've slated for a presentation by staff and then a discussion by the council. The five items I've highlighted so far, priority-based budgeting, vision for growth and development, greenhouse gas inventory, sobering center, and high-speed Internet. And in each case, we'll have a presentation by staff and then time for discussion. And in this, we're basically, we're not going to be voting. We basically want kind of high-level council feedback and direction about whether we're on the right track, about thinking about these items. And certainly, one of your options as we go through the meeting tonight is to say if there's something, if one of these should not be on the list, or if something else should be on the list, that's one of your choices. But certainly, this all came out of the work groups. We think there will probably be consensus that we're kind of getting to the first things here, but this is, we're checking. But exactly the right time to give us your feedback and give us some direction on these. We've put them in an order that we think makes sense. The budgeting one kind of affects everything else down the food chain, and it's substantial. It'll take some time. The vision for growth and development, you approved in the budget for the current year. And so we're moving forward with that. It's in action, but we've got some further thinking on that one. That's going to take some time. The other three, we think, will go a little more rapidly. And then to the extent we want to go into anything else, if you want presentation of the information items that are there or something, we can do that. As Steve mentioned, you've got some handouts to support all of this. There's a two-pager brightly colored that is a reminder of what's in the strategic plan. So if you're trying to remember something else that isn't on the screen in front of you, that's there. And then there's a high-level summary of these five items, which basically mirror the first slide and last slide in each of the presentations. So just, if you want to refer to that, what's there? So these are items for new emphasis in 2018. There's also update material in your packet on things that are already underway. We're not planning to present those tonight unless you ask for it. And if this is taking longer than we expect, we also have on your calendars February 20th as a possible fallback if this discussion needs to carry on beyond the conversation tonight. So questions about what we're going to do? Counselor McCoy.
So I want to, so we go through this, and we take these as our priority, then I'm, my understanding would be then, those are the five things. Then as the staff begins putting the budget together for, what, 18, 19, they're going to include these or attempt to include these in the budget? Or we're going to come back when we come to the budget process, and we'll have price tags on these, and we can decide to move forward? Or we're going to say fund these and get them in the budget, and we're moving forward? What's the outcome?
An outcome for tonight certainly would be to provide budget direction for those five items. There are other resources, however, that having council say, yes, we're on the right track, will be helpful. For example, vision for growth and development, I could see consuming a lot of the planning commission's time. So making sure what we're proposing makes sense to you, that this is your policy agenda, that this is where we organizationally start on the action items we believe will move, make progress in those policy areas. So it's some budget direction, it's also organizational direction. And communicating to the community, these are the, these are the items for 2018.
So to make sure I have understanding also, so this, these could go in the budget. We get to the budget, and there's other issues that council says, okay, well, this is something we want to address, or we want to, and it might be a high-budget item. Let's say, open the police, or the fire station. How does that figure in here, and what happens if we're going down the road with these and all of a sudden, the fire station comes in? Then do we start doing the math and taking these out or not?
No.
Well, I want to understand what we're doing here, because otherwise, I'm not sure I'm going to agree with all five of these. If all of a sudden, that's, we're done and there's no more.
So this is, this meeting is not intended to take the place of the budgeting process. It's to inform the staff in preparing the budget about council priorities related to these items.
Related to these items, or to the strategic plan in general?
And the strategic plan in general, but it's not the budget process that will follow.
I got that. I think, I saw it. I'm going to mic.
This really is, yeah.
Well, no, I want to make sure I understand, because if we're, to me, and maybe I get black and white sometimes, so bear with me. If we're looking at all these, and we go, yeah, these are all great, put them in there, and let's go. And then we get to the budget process, bless you.
Bless you.
I think that was, oh, yeah, that was Julie. Yeah, yeah, that was a sneeze.
Julie.
We were at a meeting after hours, she sneezed, and three people ran out of the room to see if, so who got hurt? So, but, look at that, Julie, you got me way off-target here now.
Thank you. I think she did that on purpose.
Yeah, I think she did. That was a strategy. But again, this is part of the budget process, is my understanding. And if I, if I know that there's other things I'm thinking of, I might say no to one of these, or two of these. But, so I want to, I want to understand how we're going to nail the.
Let me tell you my theory of what's going on here in a way. In the past, this has never been a transparent portion of the process. This has been the city manager and his staff writing the budget based on gleaned priorities. This is a much more open and direct attempt by the council, and Counselors have asked for this for years, to become more involved earlier in the process. These are still reasonably broad, they're still reasonably ill-defined. And there is room here for a variety of nuances to be added to it, and for the staff and the city manager to use their best judgment to flesh some of this out. But this isn't going to replace the budget process. This is just some high priorities from strategic plan. So you're okay. Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, previously, we had goal-setting sessions, and staff would develop a budget based on those elements, say, public safety would be added. This is taking and dropping down one level, I think, from the goal-setting process. And actually, taking some of those goals, and we've sat in committees and worked out and said, and this is kind of the most important area that we should look at budgeting in. But just because you don't see an open fire station on that, we're just actually talking more about some of the sub-elements that haven't been present in previous, pre-budget creation.
We're still early in the meeting, though there'll be an open fire station on there for this evening's over. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I look at this as sort of like an earlier version of the wish list. And I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, that in the past, we've gotten involved in the budgetary process way too late. The staff has developed things, maybe consistent with the goal, and they've come to us, and all we do is nibble around the edges of the budget. So, you know, it seems to me that this is the way to go. And what we're doing is telling the council, telling the staff, we have an interest in these things, and we have an interest in these things being in the budget. So it's up to you to figure out how we can put them in the budget.
Thank you. Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the five, the five points that are listed on the sheet weren't just pulled out of nowhere. I think these are the direct response to the dots, the last time that we met with Brian. So these were the priority areas that, I know the dots can make you a little upset, Counselor Nanki. But I think that we ourselves picked these priorities as the one, two, and three, and so they've come back with the five for the focus. So it's not, it's all part of that inclusive process.
Certainly, it came right out of the work groups during the strategic planning process.
Yeah. Why don't we go ahead and see, work our way through this first one and see, check it back in with you, Counselor McCoy, and kind of see if it begins to become clearer.
I can understand.
I didn't know quite how to say that. There's going to be a light go off, yeah.
So it's clear to me we're going to need a bike rack on our wall graphic for issues that are coming up from Counselors. So Gabriel, do you want to add the fire station to that, right out of the gate? Okay. Anything else before we dive into these issues? All right, so we're going to get into priority-based budgeting. And Casey, you're on.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Casey Duncan, Deputy City Manager. And it's my opportunity to begin the evening with a proposal related to priority-based budgeting. As you can see, I have the opportunity to be the sponsor of this proposed initiative. And staff lead on it will be our Budget Officer, Kelly Jacobs. I had the opportunity to participate with several council members and staff members on the Sustainable Services Work Group. And that work group included Counselors Anderson, McCoy, Osick, and Cook. And what you will see today, I'll try to tie how priority-based budgeting helps us to achieve some of the actions and goals established under Sustainable Services. So just as a reminder, we've defined our goal of Sustainable Services as aligning our city's services with available resources and maintaining a fund balance for the future. In other words, that the services that we offer as a city must be sustained by the revenues that we collect in order for us to maintain a fund balance and fund future services as well. Now, this is one of the important philosophies of priority-based budgeting that I will discuss in greater detail, along with how the philosophies and principles of a priority-based approach to budgeting align with the organization's mission, vision, values, and strategic plan. The strategic plan, as you see, calls for the redesign of the city's budget process. There was just some discussion about the fact that this is not a budget meeting. Nonetheless, the council's policy agenda, in concert with other direction established through the strategic plan, and additional guidance provided by the council to help us promote efficient, effective, and innovative services, will inform the delivery of the budget, the spending plan for producing the desired results for our community. And during my remaining time, I hope to connect the potential influence of priority-based budgeting in completing the action items listed under Sustainable Services Goal. The agenda for my presentation this evening entails the four items listed on the screen, beginning with an explanation of priority-based budgeting. We have research tools by other cities, used by other cities, to deliver on some of the actions within our Sustainable Services Goal. And priority services, priority-based budgeting, conducted with the services of a firm called Resource X, is the most proven resource that we were able to identify. As one of the 185 organizations who've used this tool in their budgeting approach, the city of Inglewood, Colorado, has provided its endorsement of the value of priority-based budgeting, calling it the most powerful budgeting resource available. International City and County Managers Association and the Government Finance Officers Administration have also recognized priority-based budgeting as a financial management best practice. And many of the principles of this approach were derived from David Osborne's book, The Price of Government, which suggests that budgeting should be based on buying results rather than simply cutting or cutting from or adding to last year's spending allocation. Priority-based budgeting is a tool for resource allocation. I believe it's fair to say that we recognize every service we provide in the city is a priority. And as we've reached out to some of the organizations who have been through this process, that was some of the feedback, and perhaps a misnomer. We know that there are many important needs that we are addressing and not addressing. And the reality is that there's a finite amount of resources to do all that we need to and want to do and accomplish. But priority-based budgeting provides a lens for us to look for as we allocate resources by examining our programs and services, identifying those results that are most important to our community that we want to produce, and using data to support our evaluation of how our programs and services contribute to the desired outcomes. The underlying philosophy of priority-based budgeting ties in closely with the city's mission of providing fiscally sustainable and quality services to achieve positive results for present and future residents. It is about how an entity should invest resources to meet its stated objectives. The principles behind the philosophy and the approach to priority-based budgeting strongly support the council's adopted values. Starting first with the value of responsiveness, Salem is at your service with capacity and partnerships to prepare for the future. Priority-based budgeting focuses on being at your service by doing what we do well. Through the process, services that offer the highest value or return on investment are identified. Priority-based budgeting is geared toward measuring the effectiveness of our response and our capacity for achieving results that were the basis for a services budget allocation. And an important component of the approach, to which I'll speak later, is analyzing program attributes through which changes in service demand and the number of similar providers in the region are examined to identify opportunities for service sharing and partnerships. The city of Salem values a government that is accessible, which is defined as being open and inclusive. Priority-based budgeting provides an open approach to budgeting in a number of ways. When budget decisions are based on a well-defined set of community priorities, the government's aims are transparent to the community. In traditional budgeting, it's often not entirely clear, from looking at the line-item budget, what programs are funded, what the total costs of the programs are, and how the services offered make a real difference in the lives of residents. Under this model, the focus is on the result of services and programs in achieving community priorities. Technology also exists within priority-based budgeting to provide open access to information. Toledo, Ohio, is an example of a city that has shared its data with the public to increase transparency, accountability, and customer service, and to empower others to harness an array of useful information. Salem strongly values opportunity, being proactive and forward-thinking. Priority-based budgeting incorporates opportunity by moving away from an incremental approach that begins with current and prior-year spending plans. With priority-based budgeting, the focus is shifted to align funding with priorities that enable the city to be proactive in producing results that matter most to the community both now and in the future. This approach continues the city's practice of long-term forecasting to achieve service sustainability and fiscal health. Many communities have used the resource alignment diagnostic tools available with priority-based budgeting for scenario-based planning to project the impact of present decisions on long-term financial viability. financial viability. So now that we have briefly established what priority-based budgeting is and how it aligns with our mission, vision, and values and strategic plan, the next question is naturally, how does it work? The four major steps in the process are identified in the center of the screen, and they are intended to answer the questions you see on the left. Determining results is a matter of defining our purpose, why we exist, what we are in the business to do. Through the strategic planning process and the visioning process, the council has considered this question and formed the foundation for delivering results and outcomes that matter most to the community. Identifying programs and services is understanding what it is that we do, the true cost of delivering those services, and the attributes of the programs provided. The next step is evaluating how each program contributes to the results we aim to realize. And the final step is putting together a budget that attempts to maximize the return on resources invested toward community priorities. We'll demonstrate how this works in greater detail, starting first with the results. This is an example of one community's priority results. I do have some copies of the handout available to be able to read more legibly. However, I will give an example of, in addition to good governance, you can see that this community has determined that it is in the business of providing a safe and secure community, effective infrastructure, economic vitality, and workforce development, recreation and cultural opportunities, and health and economic, excuse me, and health and community well-being. Each result is further defined to enable a more effective evaluation of whether the result is being achieved and how each program influences that result. Looking at the example of a safe and secure community, the community will provide safety and security to its residents by being prepared to respond to emergencies, enforcing the law, reducing crime, protecting property, ensuring safe air and access to drinking water, protecting the environment, and providing safe travel and mobility. Identifying programs and services entails determining exactly what we do and what it costs to do it. Through this process, most organizations find that they have hundreds of distinct programs in the city. After program results and costs, excuse me, after programs and related costs were identified, priority-based budgeting then examines the attributes of each program as indicated here. Is this a program the city is required to provide, and what is the source of that requirement? What is the reliance of the public on the city to obtain the program or service? What is the apparent change in demand for the service? What portion of the cost is recovered through direct charges or fees? And what portion of the community is served by the program? The final step is to assess the degree of influence each program has on achieving the desired results exemplified on this next slide with an example of one community's snow removal program. You can't see there, but you'll see some yellow highlighting. And this program was, as you can see with the numbers there, determined to be extremely influential in providing a safe and secure community and effective transportation and mobility. At the other end of the spectrum, the program was found to have just a minor influence on culture and recreation opportunities. The highlighted cells in the chart indicate where there was an acknowledgement of strong influence on the indicators of success. For example, with effective transportation and mobility, the snow removal program strongly contributes towards safe travel, easing traffic flow and congestion, providing convenient and efficient access, and providing access to multimodal travel options. So after determining the results, identifying the program and costs, and assessing the program attributes and influence on successful results, the priority-based budgeting model takes each of these inputs to provide a breakdown by quartile of those programs which appear to have the greatest to least degree of correlation with intended results. Analyzing this information can lead to a number of policy questions regarding the allocation of resources. As shown on this slide, costs are then assigned to the programs in the quartiles, and this organization appears to be allocating most of its budget to those programs with the greatest impact on desired results. Some policy questions resulting from analyzing programs through a priority-based model could be, are there programs absorbing a lot of resources that should initially be studied for efficiency and effectiveness? Are we providing service levels beyond what is necessary to meet the minimum requirements of strongly mandated but less influential programs? Are our own self-imposed policies requiring us to provide programs that appear to be less influential? Are there service-sharing opportunities worthy of consideration with other political jurisdictions, nonprofit agencies, or civic organizations? Are there public-private opportunities, public-private partnership opportunities? Are there services of lesser influence being provided that are not externally mandated for which residents have other options? And should direct charges for particular services be adjusted so that the beneficiaries are adequately supporting the cost of the service? Just to name a few. So in closing, priority-based budgeting is the most proven method available to help us with aligning city services and available resources while planning for the future. This will further the work we are doing with the redesign of the budget process and providing a budget document that is more strategically driven and a presentation that's more transparent. This approach exists because local governments simply cannot afford to do everything, so cities must, as identified as an action item, identify core services and budget strategically. This means aligning the services residents expect with what cities can afford. It requires specific goals and allocating resources toward meeting them. It also requires a serious examination about services that can or cannot be sustained under the current service delivery or funding model. Central to priority-based budgeting is the idea that all government organizations can determine the role that they are suited best to serve within a community and amongst all the potential service providers within a region. In areas where priority-based budgeting has been highly successful, communities have identified overlap, the potential for partnership, service consolidation, and the sharing of services between county, city, district, nonprofit, and private sector organizations. We believe that this approach can help us make strides toward the goal of Sustainable Services and each of the identified actions. We're asking specifically this evening for a one-time financial commitment of $75,000 to $80,000 and an ongoing commitment of $25,000 annually. We're also requesting your active participation, using the great work that you've already accomplished, to help define Salem's priority results and weight the relative value in relation to one another. This approach will be a multi-year effort, and if approved, we could commence in May and be ready in November for implementation in formulating the fiscal year '19 and '20 budget. And with that, I conclude my presentation and stand available for questions.
Very interesting. Counselor Kaser?
Thank you very much for the detailed presentation and your fancy animations. Very impressive. I believe the city of Albany does this, priority-based budgeting here in Oregon. Because I know they have an open data city transparency website, and they have the, and I actually, I have it up here, they have their strategic plan scorecards, and they base their budget and build it off of the priorities they identify in the scorecards. My question is, is how is that rubric that you showed, how is that derived? Is that something that we create and then score off of? What does that creation process look like?
Sure. That's an excellent question. And I should state that this approach is customizable to the organization and the desires of the policymakers, council, in how that takes place. Where you typically see the sheet I showed with the results and then the definition of how do we know we're achieving that results, the policymakers are most heavily involved with that in producing that. The work of going through and looking at each individual program and its program attributes and then determining how it contributes toward achieving those results is typically performed by staff. This, the group that, consultant group, provides a service of training on appropriate scoring and also set up a peer review team to help ensure integrity of the process as the model is constructed.
Counselor McCoy?
Thank you. The $75,000 and the $25,000 ongoing, is that strictly for consulting services or is that, does that buy us something else as well?
Good question. So the initial investment is for consulting services. They train us on how to move this forward. The $25,000 is for the software that's available. It provides both a resource diagnostic tool, as I mentioned, we can do some scenario-based planning, as well as the potential for that open data portal for the community to go in and look at the information.
Thank you. Counselor McCoy?
Casey, are the people, are they all in the budget department that'll be the people trained to operate the system? I mean, you had in here, you were going to train people and it could be as many as seven or something, I think it was?
Yes.
Are they all in the budget department or are they spread out within the department?
So there are various aspects to this. Some of the peer review, peer review team would be members of staff throughout the city, the organization. Some of the, should we say, the heavy lifting or initial identification, that'll take place in each department to really be able to use the resources available. One of the valuable things that this company provides is a huge database of other cities and the services that they provide. So you can go through and kind of select and customize that to the way your city operates. So that's a work, a heavy amount of work, just initially identifying how many programs, because there are likely hundreds that we provide in the city. And then there are teams that are trained on how to go through the process of looking at the attributes and scoring with respect to the results.
To me, that's the key thing here. Who's setting up these attributes and then who's scoring them is going to be, how accurate that is or how agnostic that is is going to help.
Sure. And to the greatest extent possible, we attempt to set it up with quantitative measures. One of the things that really reinforce that these peer review teams, is they go through and look at scoring, is to ask, well, how did you determine that and what data is there to support that? Where we have it, that's fantastic, but we do know that there is some qualitative measures that will also come into place as well.
Counselor Henderson?
Thank you. Casey, following up on Counselor McCoy's question, you know, I wrote down when you were starting your presentation, I put measuring effectiveness, what are the metrics, what are the goals? And what I think you're telling us is, this is the overall structure, the actual goals and the metrics and how we measure it will really depend on each one of the various city departments and goals involved. Is that correct?
That's correct. The council or whomever might be able to find the overall results that we're trying to achieve and how those are realized, but there will still be the individual program performers indicators.
This is setting up the structure, in other words.
That's correct.
Then, following up on Counselor Hoy's question, you know, in the material, this is, maybe it's a minor point clearly, but in the material, you say $65,000, and in your presentation, you said $75,000, and you said up to $85,000. Is it going to be $105,000 by the time it actually happens or how do these figures go?
So what you see in the paper there is the base, and that would include the consultants working with us, for the most part remotely. We feel it'd be more effective to have them onsite, and so that's really what drives the cost up from the initial $50,000 with no onsite visits to $75,000 with two onsite visits. And then in a further discussion with them today, I didn't realize that one of the analysis packages available with the software was an additional $5,000, so.
So we can really figure it's going to be the $85,000 rather than $60,000?
Eighty.
Okay, okay. Then I guess this goes to the point that Counselor McCoy was making. You came here tonight and say, we're asking for authorization of the $75,000, or now $80,000. Is that you're going to ask for the authorization in the next budget process? But you said we could start it in May, and that's before the next budget process?
That's correct. So it would be, the action tonight wouldn't actually authorize that. What it would be is coming back to the council.
Okay, in other words, continue working on this plan.
I think the question tonight for the context of the meeting is feedback from the council about, does this sound like?
Yeah, that's right. That's right. So at some point, we'll be having to authorize that. Then, one final question, if I may, Mr. Mayor. That was a great chart that was up, the first one, you, if you could get back to that. That one, that one, that one, I think. No, maybe there's even another one? Two, one question and then kind of a comment. First, I was unclear as where you got these various goals. Is this an example from someplace else?
This is an example from another community.
Okay, because I started looking at all those things, and I said, yeah, we got some of those in mind, we don't. So this is just, you're helping us explain how it goes.
That's correct.
It seemed to me you would have your own chart.
Yeah, yeah.
And it would be informed by your strategic plan would be the key thing, isn't it?
Right. I think I can understand that, Brian, that yes, we've got all these different goals under each of these areas, and they're going to be plugged in just like some other jurisdiction plugged in those.
That's correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Casey, one question. Will our employee unions be briefed on this?
At this point in time?
I see a lot of implications here that could result in concern.
Without authorization, we haven't moved it forward for discussion.
Well, I'd like to understand how it's going to be rolled out inside the operations of the city. I think that'd be part of my understanding I'd like to have, how that'll work. Okay, Counselor Henderson?
Several times in here, it's mentioned, explore new resource, how we can get new resources. And I know we talked about that a bit on the committee that some of the other counselors and I were on, and I would say, that's a process that the staff ought to start with some help from the council. And at some point, we may need to have a discussion, either a work session or something more, on what are the potential new sources of revenue and, you know, how much could each one bring, that sort of stuff? Because at some point, especially when you start adding these things we've got in this wish list, plus the things we're going to have in the wishes on the next council or the next budget process, we're going to need to say, either we cut everything down or we find some way to get some more money.
So I think you're saying, this priority-based budgeting thing sounds like it might be interesting, but don't forget we were going to look for additional sources of revenue. So another item for the bike rack.
Okay. Okay, Brian. Go ahead. Want to go to the next item?
Well, I just, I guess I want to make sure that everybody, I'm not sure I haven't, I haven't heard any big objections to this, but I've mostly heard questions. Does this seem like a decent way to be exploring this further? A lot of nodding heads. Okay. Good. So, all right, let's move forward. And the second item on the list was a vision for growth and development, which you have in this year's budget. And since we have finished the strategic plan, you have some new personnel and some additional thinking on this. So this is an opportunity for Norman to give you an update.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. For the record, my name is Norman Wright, Director for Community Development, and here to speak about the proposal of an approach for developing a vision for growth and development. This idea was first established as part of the situation assessment that was provided in February of 2017 as part of the strategic planning effort, in which the document stated, as mentioned on the screen here, that the issue facing the city is that its existing comprehensive plan does not provide a vision for how the city will grow as a whole, what type of growth will occur, where, and when. In other words, what the situation assessment is suggesting is that the city does not have as currently a relevant and reliable answer to this very classic question of what should the city become in the next 20 years. And by emphasizing in that document the need for a vision that depicts where and how the city will grow is to suggest that the idea of a good vision is really encapsulated in the sort of classic physical planning that was done to found and create this city as well as virtually every other older city across the nation. It's the type of work, the type of visioning that helps us understand and get a picture of the city and its future to see, again, how growth will occur, where, what type. It helps us to express the values that are present in the community, values of mixed use and density and sustainability and all of those sorts of things. These types of visions help us to really get a sense of, again, how the city will grow, where, and when. And so with that in mind, it's important to note that a visioning effort of any kind should really pursue the sort of physical planning that was done historically and is in some ways done today with many other planning efforts that we have underway. But a pretty picture of this sort is certainly not enough to make a vision effective. It can make it compelling, but it might not help to shift the reality. So what the situation assessment also identified is that there were really two problems here. Essentially, the comprehensive plan today neither provides a sense of where the city will will grow and how, nor does the plan integrate all other development plans and tie their actions into an implementation strategy. And so this is a very important point because, as we consider right now, all the planning that has taken place in the past, say, 15 years, the city has done a great job of creating a lot of visions, a lot of values. And all of those are very important embodiments of the community's values as well as the community's understanding of its conditions today, and none of these should be considered separate from one another. This gets to the idea that each of these are nested within each other in some form or fashion, or they should be. Similar to Matryoshka dolls, those Russian stacking dolls, what happens on a smaller level with the McNary Airport informs what will occur and be understood from the Economic Opportunities Analysis as well as the Transportation System Plan, which again should, moving upwards, be informed by the vision, this umbrella policy, if you will, that overrides it all. So with all of these various plans that have been done within the city, the notion that the situation assessment provides is that our future vision should use these as a foundation. They should all be pieced together in some form or fashion so that they can all be integrated, not be forgotten. And that with those pieces in place, we should also supplement them with the latest data that we can find, data occurring that informs our demographics, our population projections, traffic conditions, jobs and industry trends, that sort of thing, as well as new pieces that have also been incorporated in the strategic plan, pieces such as the greenhouse gas emissions inventory, a critical piece of the environmental concern that is certainly a part of any good holistic vision. So with that in mind, the idea here that starts to form from the situation assessment as well as from our proposed approach is to take all of these elements, both the new and the old, including things that are currently underway, such as the State Street Plan, and basically consolidate those things without diminishing them into what would be known as the city's core values and core data set. These are the sort of things that help us understand where we are today. Once those things are established and not forgotten, but rather incorporated into this effort, we can then start to understand and build an idea of where the city is heading in terms of scenarios, say, such as what will happen to the city if nothing else is done in terms of policy, but these 60,000 more people were added. What would the city look like in that case? Or what would the city look like in other instances, depending on trends that we know have a high probability of occurring? So there are scenarios, there are modeling work to be done, and then from there, we eventually get at some point later, the idea of what a preferred vision would be for the city and a preferred physical plan for how that vision will translate to real growth. But really, what I'm trying to communicate here in this basic approach is that we start with two fundamental actions. We start with a synthesis of all those existing plans and visions, try to understand what really all those things point us to today, as well as an analysis of our existing conditions and the system dynamics, what's causing what, to do what we see today and experience in the city as a whole. So the data-driven analysis part, which is really fundamental to any good vision effort, basically takes all of these components that you see here, including the newly added greenhouse emissions, as well as the existing information on buildable lands or traffic conditions or housing affordability, which has been very well measured in our housing needs assessment. It takes all of that information, but it also adds some more information in order to be holistic, information that we currently lack, on things like, say, neighborhood composition, trying to understand what our neighborhoods have right now in terms of their amenities and their benefits for the community. All of that analysis is provided, along with, again, the work that we've already done in our existing plans, and those things are then analyzed further through what would be a technical framework. And so to explain why a technical framework is needed, without sounding too academic, imagine, if you will, a situation that maybe many of us have faced. You visit a doctor because you believe you have a fever that has been brought on by contracting a flu virus. Your feeling about those problems is very real and it's based on your perception, but that does not prohibit the doctor from then still taking your temperature, from still checking your blood pressure, as well as all the other ways in which from a technical framework, they then perform a diagnosis of the problems that might be at hand, problems that might be the flu or might be certainly something else. Which is to say that the city as a whole, we all in this room can recognize several threats, several dangers that we believe that we will face in the future. But without this sort of analysis, as well as without certain consideration to the existing plans we've done, we won't truly know the nature of those threats and dangers. And so we have to really look somewhat under the surface to better understand what really are the problems versus what aren't. What are the sharks versus the goldfish? So our technical framework or a means by which we can conduct a checkup, if you will, as good doctors, is to consider the city's current conditions by way of the framework known as smart growth. Smart growth is a classic, not just planning, but economic framework for how all city building can be done. It is a common sense approach to understanding how the city is best serving its residents through its growth in the future. It is built on six core ideas. These ideas include creating housing options near work and amenities, creating more transportation choices as we can so that people can reach their destinations by many different modes. It instills the idea of vibrant mixed-use development, much as we enjoy in the downtown. It encourages the reuse of buildings as opposed to the creation of new structures solely on the outskirts, though that is certainly necessary. It also encourages the revitalization of existing communities and conserves resources in doing so. So this is a technical framework that has been applied in this state, Colorado, Maryland, Vermont, California, Washington, on and on. It's a very proven method in which we can audit and better understand the city's performance today as well as its plans for the future. Coincidentally, I've been using this approach for visioning that I'm describing for many years, and I could never quite put the name to it. I couldn't remember what it was called, but I always remembered the questions, such as the questions that are posed here. Where are we now? Where are we going? Where do we want to be? How do we get there? And are we getting there? And as it turns out, serendipity here, this is called the organ model. This was created here. So the good news is you don't need me. You've been doing this for a while. But certainly, as you can see on this chart, the idea is that a visioning effort is a multifaceted, multi-stage process, and this is where the beginning lies. So when it comes to that important question that a vision is supposed to answer, what should the city of Salem become in the next 20 years? It's really important to remember that that question isn't really even raised until step three, because you can't really logically and reliably answer that question of what the city should become until you first understand what the city is today and also where the city is currently headed. So with that in mind, we have a very proven model for creating a vision, the organ model, and I would like to propose something of an embellishment on that, the Salem model. And in the Salem model, we have those same core questions that are a part of this approach, but, you know, this little graphic is intentional in the fact that what you see here is those questions posed on a board, if you can imagine it, through post-it notes. The beauty of a post-it note is that you can put it on a board and you can take it off. And what's really important to try to introduce here for the sake of this effort is that we need to really firmly understand as best as we can, with all the planning that has already occurred, as well as all that we know of the city but have not quite cohesively put into an expression of the existing condition, we need to answer the question of where are we now and where are we going today, deliver that report to you all, and then reassess next steps. It may be that the question of where do we want to be is already answered by all that is encapsulated in the work that has occurred already. Or it may be that we really are already, not only have a vision intact, we already know how to get there, we just need to make sure that we assess if we're really getting there on schedule. Or we may find out that there are many more sharks than there are goldfish and we got to reassess completely. The point being is that for the sake of this project, we have a pretty straightforward request. This is, as mentioned earlier, already funded. So what we would like to do is use the funding, the resources that we have, thank you for those, and we would like to, in step one, take eight to 12 months, because that is really the amount of time that's needed to really understand and get our heads around all the work that is already done. Take eight to 12 months to develop a community profile and a scenario analysis that answers the question from a technical as well as a value-driven, community-driven, by virtue of our plans that are already in existence, a value-driven, technically-driven answer to where are we now, and then also answer where we are going. We would like to then report those findings to you all to help you understand what we have found through that work. There will be insights and surprises, I assure you, hopefully delightful. And then to contemplate next steps, that's step three, to basically take then that information and figure out, should the visioning effort and these resources be dedicated to a broad vision still, or should we instead shift that focus to one of these major problems that this has uncovered or to something else? To keep your options open at this stage, I think is very important, and so this is the nature of our request. And that's it from me.
Is your, very good. It was really interesting. I saw missing plans up there, you know, probably you've got a bigger stack than you actually showed us. I thought that was nice of you to edit it down so it didn't look like we'd been spinning our wheels for decades here. But is, when you talk about the funding, are you talking about the comprehensive planning project? Is that what you're using as your line item to proceed here? And the outcome of this will be an updated comprehensive plan along with some strategic documents leading us forward in economic and housing and transportation development? Is that kind of what this looks like?
It's a very good question, sir. So let me clarify. The information that we're requesting to develop through this approach is information that will be used to update the comprehensive plan. But this information will not form the actual update itself. Instead, what will happen is we will deliver this information, it will give us the foundation for that comprehensive plan update, and then when we deliver it, as a part of contemplating next steps, we can either view the remainder of our time on this project to be updating the comprehensive plan or creating the vision and then updating the comprehensive plan as a result, but the update of the comprehensive plan is a multi-year process.
Right.
And so this will be step one, necessary and unavoidable, but still just that.
Yeah, I just, again, I think a lot of this, I think this is great, but some of the rollout causes, as you can imagine, people are making long-term decisions relative to investment in the community. Will this in any way impede that or will this help that as you go through this process, do you think?
I don't think that it will impede. If anything, it will further help people understand more about what they're investing in in the city.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad the mayor said there's plans up there, that, plans that are not up there, because I just dotted down three or four of them, and we don't need to tell you because you know they're out there, and those are examples. I have to say, I'm extremely pleased with the smart growth analysis. You know, I've heard it kind of sometimes another way. I think smart growth is a better way to talk about it, but I've also seen it called build better, not bigger. You know, that's the same, the same general idea, is we have to look at what we're doing and do it in a way that reflects all conditions that affect growth and all conditions that will result from the growth. So I commend you for that. Thank you very much.
Okay, great. You're on, Brian.
Is, absence of other response, support for this notion?
Yeah. Do you want to take a break here?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, let's take, it's by that, let's get back together at 7:20 by that clock. Making good progress. We had five recommended items. We've been through two of them, the two that have by far the longest presentations involved. So from here, we're going to take on the greenhouse gas inventory, the high-speed internet and the sobering center, and then we'll get an update on the citizen survey, and then we'll have time for council and manager comments. So let's move forward with greenhouse gas inventory. You're doing that one. You're doing that one. Courtney, take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name's Courtney Knox-Bush and I work in the Mayor and City Manager's office, and I'm going to go over a pretty discreet proposal from the Environmental Action Work Group to really focus on a community-wide inventory of greenhouse gas emissions. So I want to first give you a little bit of background, and then I'd ask any of the counselors on this side of the room, who all participated in the work group, to talk a little bit, if you wish, you don't have to. You can, you can, isn't that funny how that worked out?
It's the left side of the council.
Not from here, not from here, Tom.
Right and correct.
So here's a little background. So this work group is a little bit different from those that you might have participated in, in that included in the work group were these counselors, as well as representatives from 350 Salem, PGE, and Northwest Natural, our local utility providers. The work group has met a couple of times and they looked at the environmental action policy area and recommended two ideas for action. One was an environmental action plan and a second was a greenhouse gas inventory. And as they got into the details about those things, started recognizing that it made more sense really to look at the greenhouse gas inventory first, and its sequential to that would be the environmental action planning. And as you just heard Norman Wright speaking to, the work of an environmental action plan really sort of gets back to community visioning in that it incorporates a lot of community perspectives on the built environment, transportation patterns, and open space preservation, all of those kinds of principles that you might also see in a comp plan update. And so we're thinking that the inventory itself, the baseline data, could actually inform those targets that we want to try to tackle in the visioning and in the comp plan as we move forward. So the idea is that this work group would stay engaged and involved, and is actually very interested in doing so probably this spring, to scope out what the inventory would look like and how we would be relying on the local educational institutions as well as our state agencies and those subject matter experts that we have who are in the room and participating when we have these work group meetings. There's a one-time and an ongoing cost. We're looking at about 55,000 to 70,000 in the first year, and that would be to develop some kind of an annual internship where we could be relying on the educational institutions to help us build the greenhouse gas inventory, and then we would be looking at purchasing some kind of a technological solution or software to help us maintain that data on a regular basis and make it easier to update every two or three years when we would be looking to update the data. So that's generally the proposal, and I'm happy to answer any questions, or any of the counselors might want to add in some input.
Counselor Hoy.
Thank you. I just wanted to confirm that this is a community-wide inventory, not just something from the city, that the city government generates in terms of greenhouse gas.
Thank you, Counselor Hoy. This was a healthy discussion we had, and we revisited many times this idea about whether it's solely a focus on city operations or a broader community-wide inventory, to which the city contributes some there. And the group decided that it really should be a community-wide inventory.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Following up on that, and we've discussed this at a number of other points, and I know it's going to happen, I just want to inform the rest of the council here. At various stages of this, we said we need the business community involved in this because a lot of the things that they do involve the greenhouse gas in the inventory, and, you know, pretty much the belief is that that will be helpful to their bottom line by how they do this, if only saving on environmental energy costs. Plus, if it's going to be a community-wide project, we need to have involvement of all segments of the community. So I know Courtney, you and the other staff on this group are going to be hopefully doing that and engaging the business community as well. Thanks.
Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, we had a very robust discussion on the topic, and as Counselor Anderson just mentioned, reducing, you can say greenhouse gases, or you can just say. you can just say, at home you heat your house, we're trying to save you electricity, or trying to help you save money, and actually have a net positive environmental benefit at the same time. As one looks at that inventory, and that's where the scoping project later in the year will get interesting, is how deep can you actually get? How expensive is it to get some of that information? The utilities can give us almost everything we want immediately. When you start getting into transportation, and we have, you know, how many trips per household? Does a single-family residential dwelling unit produce? You have that. If you try to go beyond that, then you're starting to spend money in research, and then what do you do with that? And how much can you actually impact and control that down the line? Governments have an interesting ability to control things sometimes, not always in a method that is entirely well-thought-of by the community that we regulate. So it'll be interesting to see how we move for that, and how we look at some incentives through the utilities and what have you, and where can we start doing the most good for people? Because it falls into a lot of things, affordable housing as well. If I can't heat my house, what, you know, and my water bills keep going up. We can negatively impact folks by how we try to motivate them to reduce energy. And then if you cut it, your energy bill, you don't really save anything, so you've just taken away the motivation for someone to actually move forward with the plan. So it gets really complicated.
Well, it sounds like it'll be an interesting year then.
Yeah.
Discuss this.
It will at that.
Good. Councilor Anderson.
Interesting in the work, is the word I taught my children to say when they couldn't say anything nice about something. I do have one other question about the cost estimate, about the FTE. You know, you don't say in this that we're going to need more FTEs to work on that, on the inventory. So is the current staffing plan to say, we can allocate that work among the various people we have on the staff?
We think we can, making healthy use of intern support.
Good, good, okay.
So we are talking about adding a paid internship position.
Right, no, I got the $75,000 in new expenses, as opposed to, we also need a staff member. It's just going to be, the staff time is already there, you're just going to allocate that as we do all the time with our excellent staff who keeps doing more and more with potentially less and less.
I think though, as well, Councilor Anderson, you did reference in the Environmental Action Work Group that we just recently held, you did mention a couple of times some concern about how we get into implementation of the Climate Action Plan and the Environmental Action Plan, and that we might at that time be looking for more dedicated resources.
Right, in fact, we did, and we were thinking that would not be this budget cycle, but potentially next budget cycle. See how foresight, much foresight we have? We're now looking at two budget cycles ahead instead of just the upcoming budget cycle. Thanks.
Thank you.
That is, it's really optimistic, Councilor.
One of the other things we talked about briefly was, as we moved through these plans, is that it needs to be so, we need to look at social equity. In other words, this is easy. It's, yeah, go get a new furnace and save money, but if you can't afford a new furnace, you're going to stick with what you've got. And small business would be the same way. If you're worried about opening the doors, you're not always going to be able to invest in whatever it would be that would, you know, lower your, if it's a 10-year payoff and you're trying to keep your doors open, you're really not worried about a 10-year payoff on some, something that reduces the footprint.
Again, it'll be interesting. I do have one other question. Did you have a question? Who's got one? Louis, go ahead.
Just wanted to make sure, working with other groups, that Oregon Department of Transportation would clearly be one of them. They're in the process of measuring these things now, and everything they've done, we wouldn't have to do when it comes to our area. And the second question, when Assistant City Manager talked on his presentation, he requested his item. Are you requesting this? Is this a staff recommendation or just staff information?
This is part of the proposed policy agenda. This is part of what we're asking for policy direction on tonight. So is it something that you want collectively to see that we move forward in this, in this arena? That's the question.
So the question is, your proposal is to move forward with the greenhouse gas inventory first, is essentially the clarifying thing, and doing it this year as opposed to at some future time?
And programming some one-time and ongoing costs to support that initiative.
Okay.
I think the one thing I would be listening for, I happen to think we should head more, head forward on this, but is what the deliverables and the timing of the deliverables are going to look like. I'd like to start seeing information on this and where this is headed as soon as we can because I think it will help us both engage the community and become more engaged, looking for solutions to the kind of social and economic issues like the ones Councilor McCoy raised. You know, what are we doing in terms of social equity and things like that? So I'm going to be very interested in how you, how you roll this out.
So Mayor Bennett, I would like to just, by way of managing expectations, make sure that you and the rest of council are aware of what the environmental work group heard, which is that we should be looking at as long as 12 months to really develop a solid baseline inventory.
Okay.
So just.
But you're letting me know you're doing it and how it's going.
We're going to let you know so often? Probably on a quarterly basis.
Excellent. Councilor McCoy.
In the discussions we had, in the discussions we had, it became clear, and I think, I think the rationale we used was, you know, before you can really solve any problem, you have to have the facts and the data. And we don't have them yet. So let's go do this inventory, get it down, and then we'll go to the next step on what we're going to do moving forward to improve things.
Good. That's what we, I think we asked you to do. Councilor Nanki.
Yeah, and we wanted to move quickly on it as well. And regards to scoping, and because of the budget process coming up, we actually got moved three or four months deeper than, than what we were ready to go for. So I think we were looking at May for next meeting for scoping.
Okay. Sounds good. What do you need from us then?
I'm hearing pretty much support for moving forward on this.
How about this side?
All the nodding heads were my, were my clue. Okay, that's going to move us forward into, Courtney, can you move the slide? Oh, I guess you can't. Sorry, I could have done that myself. That moves us into the high-speed internet. Krishna, you're going to present?
Yeah. So, good evening, Mayor Bennett and council members. Krishna Amburi, IT Director for City of Salem. I'm here tonight to talk about the proposal for high-speed internet downtown. So the City of Salem Strategic Plan, as part of the economic development and vibrant downtown, included the possibility of bringing in city-provided free Wi-Fi and high-speed internet to downtown. So our proposal is to conduct market analysis for the high-speed broadband and free Wi-Fi in downtown. And our recommendation is to hire a consultant to perform this market analysis. So the market feasibility study would include the need and demand for a high-speed internet in downtown, and the need and demand for free Wi-Fi in downtown. We're also, the study would also include, look at if there are any businesses providing free Wi-Fi right now. If the city were to move forward with this service, the analysis would include one ROI and also some possible business models. So what you're looking at in the table is, the first option is for the city-installed conduits to be leased to the internet service providers, and then the internet service providers would use the, their own fiber and provide services to the end user. And the second model that you're looking at is for the city-installed conduits to be leased to an end fiber, both of them, to be leased to the internet service providers, and then they will provide services to the end user directly. The third one is for the city to be in business to provide the internet service to the community. So what you're looking there is the city-installed conduits and fiber, and then you provide that internet service to the end user directly. The city provides that. So part of this proposal, six months from entering a contract service, the feasibility study would, would be completed identifying the need and demand. The study would also give us the data to identify possible pilot broadband and Wi-Fi projects. And for the cost, the consultant cost for this analysis is estimated at $100,000 and .4 FTE of city resources. And this is one-time cost. And the ongoing costs will be dependent on feasible study. So funding for the analysis would come from Riverfront Downtown Urban Renewal Budget. The analysis would also give us any offsetting revenue opportunities. So with that, I'm here to take any questions.
Councilor Hoy.
When we're saying downtown, which definition of downtown are we using? Are we talking about just the urban renewal area, or do we have a different geographic area in mind?
Urban renewal, yeah.
Thank you. Councilor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I raised this originally in Brian's presentation because the, what we say in our pretty little colored sheet says internet services for the city, basically, as opposed to downtown. So how did it move from a broader city base to just what's in downtown?
I think, I think part of it came from the economic development and vibrant downtown initiative from the strategic planning.
Okay.
And one of the, I think, the goals from that is to be able to provide free Wi-Fi to bring in more than the community do.
And in the past, we just had an intergovernmental agreement with the school district, which was about fiber and other things, and what the lines the school district is going to use, our fiber, our conduits, or we're going to use the, the school district's conduits, or maybe a little bit of both.
So we had the, actually, the IGA with the, we are working on with the state.
Yeah.
So, no, we're, yeah, we're not actually charging. So what happened with the school district was Salem Kaiser School District got federal grants to install their own fiber.
Yeah.
Right?
And they want to use our conduits?
No, they want, they want us to give them the right of way.
Okay.
So, and because part of that, we had to go with an IGA with that.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Well, are the school districts going to have free Wi-Fi in the schools?
Yeah, so they're going to.
Well, I guess the reason I ask is, right now, as Councilor Hoy says, all we're doing is looking at what's in the downtown. That's the only focus we're having. And I'm wondering if there's some way, I mean, ideally, I'd want it to see, see it be citywide, but there are many intermediate steps that can take. And one of them might be, we got school districts, we got schools all over the place. Is there some way we can hook into the school district's Wi-Fi? And then we have the state and other state agencies that have some sort of Wi-Fi. And I don't know if, you know, that would expand the area, you know? I suppose I was in a state office building, I bet I could get free Wi-Fi there, and I don't know how far that goes.
So your point would be that, as we're exploring this, you'd like to see it go beyond downtown?
Yes.
And take advantage of connecting with the school district as an idea?
Yes, and I would certainly pick door number three of the, of the three proposals that you made, but I would say one of my goals, if it's at all feasible, is to have the city be the internet provider.
Right. So just to kind of give a little bit of background on that, is we actually have been working with as part of like another project, we actually did work with the Salem Kaiser School District, and we tried to, you know, collaborate with the different agencies within Salem to see if we can, if the city can provide that internet service to Salem Kaiser School District. But they have decided to go with the, with the grant that they received, and they're building their own fiber. But I think part of the grant is they have to, I don't know if Casey maybe can talk about that, but I don't think they, we can use their fiber.
So the federal grant that they receive really limits the use of that fiber specifically for educational purposes for the district?
For educational purposes.
That's correct.
Okay. Well, every time I go on Wikipedia, that's an educational service.
I'll bet. Let's move on.
Just one question.
Just for a sec. Just for a sec. Councilor Nanki, a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've been talking about a ring in the City of Salem for a long time, and trying to map out where fiber is now and what we could do. And every year at the Natoa Conference, some city is getting an award for setting up their own municipal broadband system at a fraction of the cost and much higher speeds than what you're seeing other places. When we started, started to first talk about, you know, high-speed wireless, or high-speed internet in general, I look at it more from an economic development, because there's businesses that rely on that. And if we had that available, say in the Mill Creek Corporate Center and what have you, we could have a much stronger leveraging ability to entice companies to come and spend their time with us. And a lot of them have very good paying jobs as well, so.
Good.
So just to kind of clarify.
Downtown, though, if I can just wrap it up, and it's more of just a comment, is a great thing for a community, because downtown is where people gather.
Right.
But that's totally independent from an economic development piece, and I think both are valuable.
Right. I think, I think part, there's two different things, but just to be kind of clarified, one is free Wi-Fi. The other one is faster internet. So I think somewhere we have to do the market analysis to identify what the need and the demand is. So I think a part of the, the reason why downtown came as part of this was because of that vibrant economy initiative from the strategic plan. So it's not necessarily that we have to stick to downtown, but we have to do that market analysis somewhere.
Councilor Anderson.
Net neutrality, how does that affect the potential, what would happen if we had a citywide system? Or are, we're not, we're still, we still have the net neutrality problem?
We will, yeah.
Okay. Okay. And I presume, just as sort of an aside, if what comes to happen, what the people who are, who are in favor of net neutrality, happen that internet services are now going to charge more for faster services, and the providers will do all that stuff, and it's going to end up either slowing things down or costing more? I presume that will affect the city then as well, or not? Kara's shaking her head here. Obviously, I know nothing about this, except that the internet is a series of tubes.
Okay. That's very good. Councilor Cook.
Thank you. So I'm glad to hear about your interest in looking at the school district. I do have a question with the hospital. I know they're not in the downtown core, but since they're a large facility, is this, could you talk a little bit about your option or offers that you may have? I know we skipped over the sobering center, but in looking in ways to look at a large employer and where technology is frequently used, how that would benefit?
So as part of that, like, what we are actually currently working on is providing that, you know, fiber to the state. I think right now we are working on a contract so that the state can actually use our fiber. So that's our, like, phase one piece of using our existing fiber for revenue. I think once that is in place, then we have to look at other options. We have to look at other businesses that could use our fiber, and then we can actually get that revenue from. So we haven't explored the, the hospital yet, but right now we are working with the state to finalize the contract.
Thank you.
Krishna, I'm sorry. Well, I mean, I want to check on something. Krishna, your ask then is essentially kind of a thumbs up on $100,000 from the Riverfront Urban Renewal Agency to fund this. Is that, do I understand that?
Yeah, if that's what the council wants to go.
That's right. Okay, Kara, go ahead.
Thank you. I guess it's more of a, a comment, but I think it'd be fascinating to, for our needs analysis to be citywide, community-wide needs analysis. I do think they're separate issues. There's a needs analysis for high-speed broadband and municipal. There's a needs analysis for high-speed broadband, municipal essentially-owned broadband. And then there's the second component of free Wi-Fi downtown. And when this came up in the work session for this strategic goal, one of the things I've heard downtown is that Internet service downtown is not very good. And that that doesn't attract businesses to want to locate downtown because of that. So we were trying to get at that problem of how can we provide better Internet, specifically downtown, and incentivize moving downtown. And free Wi-Fi was one of those things that we had, had talked about. But they are kind of separate issues.
Yeah, I would hope that there would be information developed, that we could begin to extrapolate a citywide look, but that this continues to be a focus on downtown at this point. But, you know, that there be some open ends where you can look outside. And I'm sure you'll do that. You'll have information developed. Counselor McCoy.
Is part of the study going to be, well, if we go to a citywide thing, the demand for this? Is there a big, booming demand for this or not?
Is there a big demand for the Internet? Is that your question?
No. For, for new broadband and Wi-Fi providers?
Counselor Cook, so let's just, okay? We'll question each other through me. Go ahead. Brian.
Other questions or comments? Seeming, a lot of feedback.
I got one. I, I'm sorry, but I'm brand-new with the cellphones and the Internet connection. But my question is, I guess, do most people subscribe to an Internet provider that they can use in and outside the city? And if that's the case? No? Well, my, my concern is, if they're going to have to purchase something from a provider so they can access Internet other than Salem, are they going to end up paying more? That's the question.
Clearly, there's going to be a lot of remedial work needed to just get us up to speed to where we can talk about this like we know what we're talking about. Krishna, can you answer that?
Well, I think it all kind of depends on what business model that we are going to pick from. So one is, if the, the city is providing the Internet service, right? And, and we are the ones that are providing directly to the end-user, then there is nobody else. And the cost model obviously has to work for the community, like what, what we are trying to offer. With the other two options, we just give them the fiber, and then any Internet service provider can take that fiber and then provide that service directly to the end-user. So it all depends on the model that we are going to pick from that market analysis, so.
Okay. Counselor Casey, go.
Thank you. Just to Counselor Lewis, most people in Salem have one option for Internet.
Yeah.
Depending on where you live in town, you either have Comcast, CenturyLink, or you can go satellite, and that's it. So for most people, there is no choice for your ISP.
Yeah, right now.
Yep.
And that's one of the, I think, yeah, so.
Okay.
I'm hearing, I'm hearing support for exploring this further and need for a glossary and a lot of sort of information about what, what do all these terms mean as we're discussing it? Counselor Cook, did you have something that you wanted to say?
I'm, I'm really excited about this, and I want to thank the IT department for their work. They really do a lot of great work for the city.
Yeah, actually, Chuck Fouser is with me here today. And he, him and his team have been putting a lot of work into this from the past five years, building that infrastructure that the city needs, so, yeah, it is exciting, so.
It's fantastic. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. I've heard fairly clear support on this. The last issue on the list for the five proposals there is the sobering center. And I think Steve Powers is going to do that presentation.
I am, with the help of Police Chief Jerry Moore. The strategic plan includes a very discreet recommendation action to establish a sobering center, an alcohol-only sobering center, eight to 10 beds, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. Why? Why the city? Currently, law enforcement, fire, parks and public, public works facility staff are responding to complaints and concerns associated with behaviors and activities of homeless in, in our community. Public safety reports as many as 20 cases a day of persons too intoxicated to be safe to themselves or others. Officers are not able to place individuals into addiction recovery programs, meaning either they're admitted to the ER, or if a crime has been committed, they are lodged in an already overcrowded county jail facility. As the need for a sobering center was also identified by the Mid-Wilamette Homeless Task Force, and with the previous direction of council, we have been working with partners to try to establish a sobering center in Salem. Marion County, Salem Hospital, and now other regional hospitals, the Mid Valley Community Action Agency, and Bridgeway Recovery Services have been meeting to scope a, a, a facility, identify a location, and to negotiate and discuss funding sources. The estimated annual cost of a sobering center is between $600,000 to $700,000. A site that would allow co-location with the Community Action Agency, the renovation cost for the sobering center portion is estimated to be $367,000. A request has been made to the state for capital expenses. The state has supported sobering centers in other communities. And the results from those sobering centers and those other Oregon communities have, have, have indicated benefit to the community and certainly benefit to the public agencies. We are continuing to, to, to work on that site and to continue to formalize an operating agreement with, with the entities, operating agreement with, with Bridgeway, and, and a grant, a agreement with, with Bridgeway as well. Bridgeway, right now, has been identified as, as the provider. And, and the city's support would be to Bridgeway to provide the, that service. And also support, if the state funding is unsuccessful, support for the capital or one-time cost to renovate the, the space.
Counselor Hoyt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very supportive of this concept, but I heard, I heard you say something, Mr. City Manager, that I hadn't heard before in relation to the sobering center. And that was that it's alcohol-only. That's the first time, I think, I've heard that. Could you go tell us a little bit more about that?
I can't. Perhaps the, the police chief can. He's, he's stepping up to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. I believe that was the concept that, that came forward, just because of the need. And of course, we, we understand there are other needs. But I think the thinking behind this facility at this point was to get into the, the, the real problems that we seem to have out on the street, and that is alcohol-related. That doesn't mean there isn't the need for other, but I think we have to start with this problem, and then we will see about moving on. Bridgeway, of course, is able to deal with both those issues. But just trying to get people in the door and get them started is, I think, where we're, where we're headed right now.
Counselor Anderson.
Two questions, I think, for the city manager. When you said it was $600,000 to $700,000 cost per year, and then $367,000 for the sobering center, and I saw that in your report, too, is the sobering center, in addition to the $600,000 to $700,000, or included in the $600,000 to $700,000?
The $367,000 figure would be the one-time capital or renovation cost for the space.
Got it. And that's what we're looking for, the grant. And then the ongoing cost would be the $600,000 to $700,000 a year.
Correct.
And I, I'm all in favor of this, too, even despite the cost, or maybe even because of the cost, because that's an indication of what a serious problem we've got here. And I really appreciate the fact that the staff is looking for other sources of funding. And I know I said this at some other time, but I would certainly talk about Salem Health, because it says it's $3.9 million in Medicare costs they're getting, but that doesn't tell us how many millions of dollars they are losing in the difference between Medicare and what, you know, an insurance company might pay, and the difference between Medicare and their cost, and the difference between the costs that aren't covered by Medicare or Medicaid that they're just eating right now. So I would bet that they're looking at a pretty substantial yearly operating loss that they're never going to recover, no matter how many collection agencies they turn it over. So, you know, they might be interested in some sort of ongoing communication or contribute, contribution to this, and I would hope that we would explore that with them. Finally, one of the things, indication of needs.
We could get an answer on that. I, I think what you'll find, Counselor, I'll let the chief maybe speak to who your partners are in this project, or the manager, either one.
Well, certainly Salem Health is one, and they, the discussions have been ongoing support.
Great, thanks. Yeah. Okay. Casey.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I'm understanding the, the staff report cost estimate correctly here. So, so staff are anticipating $350,000 capital cost to transition the facility, and they're hoping to get that from the legislature. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then the ongoing annual operating cost, $600,000 to $700,000. And that's among the partners. Among the partnership, that's the annual operating cost. And of the, the city's asked to contribute is $200,000.
Currently, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And, yes, that's the ask for this, for this evening, yes.
Yeah, first one's free. Counselor Lewis.
Yeah, Chief, I want to go back to the, the limitation the, the service will provide. Is there an anticipation that as it gets going, you'll be able to incorporate those that are under drug addiction? Or will this always be just for alcohol addiction?
Counselor, I'm not sure I can answer that. I think that's going to be after the provider. I think there, for the efforts that you've asked about, I think this facility would need to expand greatly. And I'm not sure that, at this point, we have enough room to deal with all of those issues. And I think that's why this started out as an alcohol-only. But as I indicated earlier, of course, there, there is an issue that's going to have to be addressed at some point. I'm just not sure if we can do it at this time.
Anyone else? Counselor McCoy.
Who would the other partners be? If we're $200,000, you're $400 short, and what's the hospital?
Salem Health, Marion County itself, and then the Community Care Organization.
Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Yeah, and I've actually talked to Sheriff Myers and District Attorney Beglow about this as well. And they're very supportive of it. It, it takes away a lot of resources from their end as well. And, and I think all the partners benefit significantly by inclusion of it and splitting it up.
Okay, good.
So I'm hearing pretty strong support for this one as well. So where we are in the process is, we've been through the, the five recommendations and seen pretty strong support for all of them with various nuances and feedback. We want to do three more things tonight. We want to have a briefing, a very short briefing on the citizen survey that was just completed, and then public comment, and then a chance for a counselor and manager issues where, I know there are a few things that you all wanted to bring up. So that's where we are in the process. If, if, Mr. Mayor, if it makes sense to go forward with that?
That sounds great.
Okay. Courtney?
Hi again. I'll give you a quick overview of the residential satisfaction survey that we completed in December of 2017.
And which is in your packet and available online.
Yes. And in my next breath, so, sorry. There is on the strategic plan webpage, there is a button now, thank you, Cali, that links directly into the residential satisfaction survey. So you can pour over all the details. There's even tables that show all the different percentage allocations of responses, as well as comparisons where it adds value to the 2016 survey that we did as well. So just quickly, I want to give you a sense of it. We did the survey through our contractor, D H M, out of Portland. And John Horvick is our primary contact there, and you might have heard him on NPR. He's really good at this. And he tells me that 457 land and cell lines is a representative sample of Salem's residents. They did the survey on December 7th through the 13th. And then he looked at the data, and he was, had a moment's pause where he thought we didn't get enough participation from Spanish speakers. So he went back and put the survey back in the field on the 19th of December to try to get more input and get it more representatively balanced. And they achieved it. In general, and, in general, residents are optimistic about the city's future, and they're satisfied with city government and the services that we provide. That's good news. It's really easy for me especially, and I'm sure for some of us, to dive into what didn't go well, what they reported less favorably. But let's just pause there for a minute. Nine out of 10 people are really appreciative of the services the city provides. That's really good news. This, the concerns really reflect the policy direction that we've talked about here tonight and focused in the strategic plan. So the concerns really are focused on homelessness, affordable housing, and transportation, which we expect. We, those are services that also, that residents want to see the most improvement in. When asked, which services should we invest a lot in and see more improvement? Those are the services. Most of the tasks that people do, like paying bills and applying for permits, are consistently rated favorably. People are easily finding access to those services. Throughout the survey, however, we heard from young people, residents of North and Northeast Salem, and unaffiliated voters, who felt that the, they're feeling less engaged with the city overall. So that's an indication that we have some work to do there around communications and engagement. And then we asked a few questions in this survey about, to help us get started on the visioning work. We asked a couple of questions about how residential might change or feel differently, how, how people would like to see it. And if you can imagine, that is kind of an abstract question. But what we heard was, residents want walkable neighborhoods that include businesses and have housing with a little bit more density than we see today. So in general, that's a really high overview of the survey. But it's all available in your packets and online as well.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. If it's all right, I'm going to move on then to public comment. Okay. Joyce Judy.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. My name is Joyce Judy. I'm with Ward Five, and I'm on the city of Salem budget plan. One of the things that I would like you to consider as part of your policymaking is to think about the so-called near homeless. We're doing an awful lot, which is wonderful, for a homeless community. But you also want to avoid having new homeless people. And that comes from people whose rents keep going up and up and up, and they have no place to move. And yes, that comes into the affordable housing. But is there any way that you can do things to keep people in that expensive housing until they can get low-income housing? Is there anything that can be done to provide deposit money for when they aren't able to move? Because even, even though they may get to a place where they can't afford their rent, and they put in for housing, and they don't get it, there's no lesser or lower apartment housing for them to get. So their only option is then to go into their cars, or couch surfing, or on the streets. So I'm just concerned that we're helping one side, but we're booting people out the door on the other. And you're just going to have a big vicious circle of people going out of their apartments, onto the streets, and then you're going to be putting them into apartments, back onto the streets. So it becomes a big circle. So I just want you to think about, is there any small amount of money that can be thrown at that? Don't know what it would be or how. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay. Linda Walmark and Soren Urban.
Good evening. My name is Linda Walmark, and I live in Ward Three. And I'm speaking this evening on behalf of 350 Salem, Oregon, the citizens, local citizens group acting to address climate change. And I'm here tonight to thank you for adopting an environmental action plan and for inviting 350 Salem to the table to act as a partner in developing the plan's climate focus. We urge you to properly fund and staff this project, especially the inventory process that is described by Courtney Knox-Bush. And we also recommend for the long run, when we get into the implementation phase, a high-level staff person to facilitate the interdepartmental communications and drive the process. But I also have with me here tonight, a young friend. This last November, 350 Salem, Oregon, and Salem Environmental Education co-sponsored a free day-long academy as part of the International Plant for the Planet program. There were 36 local children and youth, grades five through 12, from 11 different schools in this area, who came to St. Paul's Episcopal Church to learn about climate change and climate justice. We also planted five oak trees in Bush Park with the assistance of city staff. The trees were donated by the city. We received a small Public Works Department grant to help defray the costs. And Mayor Bennett came and encouraged the group. So we also want to thank the mayor and the city for their support for that project. But right now, I'd like to introduce one of our Climate Justice Ambassador graduates to share his thoughts with you, and he will introduce himself.
Hello, my name is Soren Urban, and I live at 703 Scenic Heights. I'm a seventh grader at Heritage School, and I'm the future of Salem, of America, and the world. And if we don't do anything about climate change, not many of you will suffer. I and your children will. And my family usually loves to hike in the summer, but that was ruined this summer by all the smoke and the fires. And I'm very sad that we only got to go a few times because it's very beautiful up there. If climate change continues, things like this will get worse and worse. And if we stand by and watch the effects of climate change on everything near to us and do nothing, then the world will come to a slow end. But if we stand up and fight climate change, then the world will be perfect for me and your children. Thank you for adopting, thank you for your time and leadership in adopting climate change a goal for the Climate Change Action Plan.
Excellent.
So youth like Soren are the reason why a climate action plan is so critical. So let's invest in the long-term success for his sake and for other children in Salem. 350 Salem will do all that we can to help create and support a robust climate action plan that the city can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Soren.
Warren Binford.
Warren Binford, 1000 Judson Street. I am in Councilmember Anderson's district. I am calling, I'm coming to follow up on the staff's report on child-friendly cities and the action update. And I'd like to thank the staff for preparing this report for the city council. I appreciate all of the efforts that the city and community partners are making on behalf of our children in the city. And I'd like to try and understand better the staff's recommendation that no additional action is recommended at this time. I think that when you talk about creating a better world, when you talk about investing in our youth, it's critical that we're constantly taking action to improve on the good things that we do so that we can continually become better. Earlier, the presenter who was talking about strategic planning for the city talked about visioning and the importance of visioning. There is a verse in Proverbs 29:18 that says, where there is no vision, the people perish. And that sounds like a very harsh interpretation. So I prefer the interpretation that where there is no vision, there is no hope, that it's children like Soren Urban who are the hope of our city. As he says, he is the hope of Oregon, he is the hope of the world, as are his classmates and other children here in Salem. And at the end of the staff's report, they clearly delineated nine steps that need to be taken to become a child-friendly city, to build a child-friendly city. And those nine steps are very simple, that we need to intentionally create opportunities for children like Soren Urban and Francis Binford-Ross a few months ago to participate in events like this, and to share their concerns and to share their values, to create a child-friendly legal framework, et cetera, and so on. I am happy to support you in implementing these steps. I am happy to provide you with guidance on, on, you know, what a child-friendly legal framework looks like. These are things that I do for other governments around the world right now. And you are my city, you are my home. If I can help you to do this, I would like to. But I'm very, very confused when I see the staff say that we have sidewalks that are required to enter a business, and that's what makes us a child-friendly city. Well, sure, that's part of what makes us a child-friendly city, but that's not enough. And I want to challenge us to become the best child-friendly city that we can be, balanced with our other commitments. I, you know, I don't think that this is the end-all and the be-all, but I do think that this is the foundation of our future. And so I'd like to help you to create a city in which children like Soren and Francis will feel comfortable coming up here and talking to you about their vision for the city and can provide their perspective so that we can create a more informed citizenry. So I'd just like to thank the staff for preparing this report, and I'd like to ask them to reconsider their recommendation to the city council that there's no further action needed at this time. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Counselor Anderson.
I don't have a question, just a comment. This is one of, there were three, I think, that were information-only. And Brian indicated we might have a chance on, we have a date of February 20th for a backup if he needed. I would suggest that maybe we could have some further discussion on this item and the other two items. One was the homeless rental assistance program, which is pretty much just an information. I see Mr. Wilch is here tonight. Perhaps he could talk to us about that at the other meeting. And the other was the infrastructure action update. I don't, you know, I don't know what the will of the rest of the council is, but some of these, I think, could use a little more council discussion.
Counselor Cook.
I know the mayor had said on Item Five, Counselor Comment, that we could use it at that point to bring up any additional focus or measures. And I was interested in talking about this further. I certainly appreciate Professor Binford's comments, and especially the discussion of values tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All righty. That's everyone signed up. Right? Okay. Okay, we'll move on then. We'll go to Council City Manager comments. You should go ahead. Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just in, with the perspective of looking at how this may shape the front end of the budget, I know at the Morningside Neighborhood Association last week, there was concern with having one neighborhood liaison, being able to support 18 neighborhood associations. And I know our, our staff all went away, and we essentially have a relatively new person in that position. So just that there's a concern out there, I don't know if any of the other counselors have heard it from their neighborhood associations as well since that employee's been hired. But I'm sure there's going to be some learning curve that comes up, but we need to keep an eye on that. So between, you know, neighborhood services and compliance services are the two that we always have concerns with staff levels on during the budget season as well.
Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I underscore what Counselor Nanki said. I hear that same concern from my neighborhood associations. But what I wanted to speak to is something on our bike rack there, and that's the, the fire station. I proposed during the last budget cycle that we reopen Station 11. And I just want to make sure that that is still on our agenda and that we're moving forward with that. So I don't know what our intention is with things on the bike rack, but I'm hoping that we can move them somewhere more towards action.
Counselor, what would your suggestion be? Would you like to have the manager write it into his budget? What are you thinking?
Thank you. Thank you for the leading question.
Anderson has not objected yet.
I think that's a fine idea, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for thinking of it.
So that would be your recommendation?
Yes, sir.
So Gabriel, why don't you make a list of these suggestions? Why don't you put the fire station under neighborhood liaisons there? Just another, another bullet there.
So I assume by the silence, everyone's in favor of this? Am I hearing that right?
I think you could say we're in favor of putting it on the wish list than putting it in.
This isn't a wish list. This is asking the manager to put it into his budget.
All right.
What did he just say? Is that what he just said?
Yeah. That doesn't necessarily mean that when the budget comes up, we're not going to have a discussion about that, but it'll be in the budget. Yeah.
Counselor Nanki.
Yeah, and in that light, we talked about it during the last budget, while we were waiting for the standards of cover document to be completed and have those conversations. And at that time, it was, as compared to a few years back, when we kind of opened it partway, then opened it all the way and had to shut it down. And at that time, it, it wasn't necessary to have it be a 24/7 facility, and we were able to get by with 40 on the original. And where we are now, 24/7 is the mode that it should be operating in. And I think there was a couple of different, there was a relocation for
Station Five.
The station, yeah, up at Schmeckada, and then moving this one. So either we take them in steps, we need to figure out how to prioritize those two items and probably walk them in one year at a time, rather than, the budget impact of opening them all up will be significant to other operations inside of the city. And so if, if we're going to say, do that, we need to start giving some guidance on where those offsets are too. Because otherwise, the city manager is just kind of stuck out there limbo, and it's like, well, let me guess what I should cut. Because...
Well, what the manager, if I understand this process, what he's looking for are priorities.
Yep.
Here's one. We want that fire station open. There's a priority.
Yep, and neighborhood services.
Okay. Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I'm going to echo pretty much what everybody said about opening Fire Station 11. I agree that it should be in the budget. I'd much rather have somebody try and prove to me that something's more important than to have me try and prove at the very end that this is important.
Counselor Casey, you look trouble.
I look trouble.
We're thoughtful. It looks like you got an idea going there.
Moving off the fire station topic, I would like to, I guess, propose out there strategically that we look into adopting some type of program for historic building owners to seismically retrofit their buildings. And this is something that came up specifically in the Economic Development and Vibrant Downtown work group. And there's something that the legislature just passed this last legislative session that allows cities to adopt some type of program for property owners to take advantage of, so they can seismically retrofit their buildings. But I think it's, it's important, and I think that's a strategic, I think that could be a strategic task, because it would essentially just provide code for somebody to do that and have incentives to do that. So, but I feel like it's important to start now, because we will eventually have an earthquake. And eventually, a lot of our downtown buildings are going to fall down. And I'd rather that people can start that work now, rather than waiting later. But they do need incentives, because it's very expensive. So it's, it's something that, like I said, was identified here, and I would like to see the city kind of take action on that if possible.
Okay, so how's everybody feel about that one going on as a priority?
Priority.
Or whatever these are. I don't know. What do we call these?
Well, how you look at the program, is it granted?
It's a, it's kind of a build-your-own-program. The legislature just provided a framework to have it. But it's, it's a, I've talked with Lisa Anderson Olgavy, and I know City Manager Powers here is ready to talk, but it's essentially a build-your-own-program.
So are you seeing it maybe as part of the economic development and downtown?
Yeah, because it's actually identified on the sheet. Yeah.
One of the actions from that issue area, if council is interested in meeting on the 20th of February to discuss other issues, we can certainly bring that one forward with, with a presentation and additional information on how it would work.
Well, let's see where we are at the end. I want to make sure on the fire, fire station. Got any objections? Okay. We're asking the city manager to write that into his budget as part of the evening's strategic planning. Okay. All right. Counselor Cook.
Yes, so I just wanted to speak a little bit about the survey results and the results showing that young people are feeling less engaged with the city. And then also putting that in conjunction with the recommendation not to move at this time on the child-friendly initiative, and just seeing where we can make some progress in this field. I understand that the nine steps can be pretty specific and cost restrictive. So trying to open that up and see where we can include some things. I was really impressed with Casey's presentation of the budget and looking at that matrix. And curious if we could include, because it is part of our core value system for current and future residents, which kind of implies across the age spectrum, being able to consider the effect or the impact that policies and procedures and programs that we're putting in place, how they affect kids and their families. If we were to have an item like that in a future matrix, being able to say, I think the staff report is wonderful, that it's focused on the things that we're doing, but to be able to bring that into the equity issue, like you've talked about previously, to be able to put that through in the language and say, how is this impacting kids? How is this impacting the next part of Salem, the people that come after us? We have a balanced budget. This is good for future generations, that they won't be saddled with this debt.
Do you, do you see that, I'm listening to how you're saying that, as part of that matrix then described, that's what you, one of those ones across the top, that a policy, its impact on children, would you be interested in making that and seniors? I mean, I hate to declare a conflict right now.
I would be very interested. And I think it's across the spectrum. I mean, Mr. Mayor, you bring up a great point. Most of the people, my kids being watched by my wonderful husband right now, but, you know, when we're at work, it's Grandma and Grandpa that help. So with Salem being a child-friendly, or a family-friendly, or inclusive, or an equitable city, we need to be including it. And kids are not going to be members, young kids, of boards. They're not going to be able to come to these meetings in the same capacity. But we have an obligation to include them if we're going to be just holding true to those core values. So I would be very interested to answer your question, including that in the matrix, and having that on future staff reports, to be able to say, you know, we passed the library bond, and this will affect kids
Yes.
because of these future things. Or here's how this will have an impact. Here's how we're planning for the future.
Casey, did you catch that? The concept there of, as you put together the matrix, one of the things the counselor is talking about is looking at its impact in a, in a way she described. Okay. Are you going to talk? You're not going to object, Casey.
Yes, ma'am.
No, come on, Casey. Trying to make this staff-friendly now. Okay. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. You know, I just don't have enough city council meetings, and so I'm interested in the February 20th. If, you know, I'm happy to meet. I also can see if the will of the council is not to. But I see two issues that have kind of come up. One is Counselor Casey's, the downtown seismic retrofit, and the other is the child-friendly cities. And I don't know that necessarily we need to have a meeting, but I would maybe like on both of those, some sort of staff report that we could see. I think that would satisfy it. If, if we had a discussion by the staff about, here's why we don't, we said we don't take action on one through nine, or here's maybe in reflection, maybe we could take action on some of those. And I think the same thing could be true. We could get a report from the urban renewal folks about what we do downtown. So I don't know that we necessarily need a meeting, but if the city manager, if it would work to get a staff report on those two issues. Well, I, yeah, but we still, we didn't discuss it tonight, and...
No, I think your, I think your question's a good one. And would that be possible, Mr. Manager, to, to maybe just have these come to council as a staff report or some sort of report, instead of meeting on... as a staff report or some sort of report instead of meeting on to these two issues?
Mr. Mayor, you know, Counsel McCoy said we already have a report on the child-friendly cities, but, you know, maybe I didn't read it carefully enough, but why don't we want to take further action is kind of the issue that I would see. Then I have one other comment on the survey, and that is, there were some questions about walking and biking. Do you find it safe to walk and bike or that sort of stuff? And I really think that those two activities could be split up. I mean, walking is one thing and biking is another thing. I mean, especially because you're biking in the streets, you're biking in bike lanes, you've got other things. And walking relates to sidewalks and...
And streets and bike lanes and...
Well, but you're not walking, I think those are two different things. Do you, some person might feel safe walking and some person might feel safe biking, but you might not feel the same thing. In other words, I think in the future, that kind of survey should be two questions rather than one in terms of, do you feel safe walking? Do you feel safe biking?
Counselor McCoy.
To the childproof or the child-friendly. Well, you showed my age, didn't I?
Child-proofing the city.
Yeah, I want to see that. But to that, you know, we made the motion. We could put that on this list. I mean, to me, at some point, we've got to start prioritizing. And Counselor Cook and I talked earlier today and...
I can't hear you, Mr. McCoy.
Oh, that's a first. But, you know, there's, I get the sense that the staff is prioritizing to some degree here because, I mean, we don't, we're definitely not touching all the different aspects of the strategic plan now. And we start putting these, all these other things on here, and I'm fine with that, discussing it, but it still seems to me at some point, we're going to have to do it or the staff's going to do it for us. We're going to have to prioritize because real bluntly, and I'll get back to practicalities, we're going to run out of money. You know, we could keep adding everything we want on here, but at some point, we can't pay for it all. Or we're going to do everything a little bit and nothing a whole lot, one of the two. And so I guess, you know, I'm willing to go talk again. Well, we can meet again, Tom, but at some point, we're still going to have to go halt. We can't go 1 through 11. We're going to have to go 1 through 4.
Well, right now, we're not in agree, I think Counselor Anderson talked me out of a meeting and sort of into a couple of staff reports if need be or some sort of explanation. Does that, is that okay with you?
It's fine with me, but we've got a staff report on child-friendly cities. Now, whether you agree with it or not, but there's one there and their recommendation is right now, it's my interpretation. My interpretation is it's complicated and it's costly and it's...
Okay. I hear you. Counselor Anderson.
You know, my idea would be an information report, and it is all information reports. Sometimes we have questions on them and discussions, sometimes we don't. As opposed to...
Another...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Counselor Cook.
So I think this, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this question would be directed towards Casey with priority-based budget. I'll give you time to get up front to the microphone if you... So if the matrices that was up front was just an example from a different city, and if these steps were being put in place, would you see that having age-friendly or having child-friendly, having these specifics as far as equity and how people are being reached would match some of the other cities that you've seen, that they've had those same columns or rows in their priority-based budgets to be able to determine how they impact the city?
Sure. I think the beauty about this is you get to define the results that you want to see. You can also take a look at what other communities have done, but you can customize it to the lens that you want to look through. That's the analogy that we're using here. So, you know, whether it appears more in the heading as one of the results or whether it is as a safe community or in having efficient transportation and infrastructure that a part of that is, meets the needs of children in the community, it could be one of the defining characteristics of that result you're trying to achieve.
And just to clarify, if we do put it in the priorities-based budget, there would be a way for it to be funded, so it's not a concern that we're just putting things in that we can't fund because that's part of the priority-based budget.
So that could become part of the process in creating that filter that we look through in establishing priorities for the city.
Thank you.
That just seems like a really elegant solution is to use it as part of the filter rather than say we're going to become, you know, we actually do it that way. Anyway, anything else?
Mr. Mayor, can I make a suggestion about how we might...
Close down?
Yeah.
Excellent. Because I'm just going to hit the hammer again.
So, so what I heard tonight was council support for all five of the items that were presented. I heard council message to the city manager that they're interested in neighborhood liaisons and the fire station. And I heard a request for more information about why the staff report about child-friendly came out the way it did. And I heard a request for some information about seismic retrofits. And I think that was the direction we got tonight during the meeting. And I, unless I missed something there, I would suggest that that's what we came for. And...
Good. Everybody ready to go? Counselor Cook.
You didn't mention the additional sources of revenue, which is on...
You're right. Good catch. Thank you. And, and the reminder that in addition to thinking about priority-based budgeting, we should remember that we're looking for new addition
Right.
...of revenue.
Very good. All right. If there's nothing further, Mr. Mayor, there's still comments for you.
Just, just, thank you very much. I think the discussion was, was, was very hopeful, very, very, very helpful for me, for staff. Again, this is just a start. The city of Salem is a half a billion-dollar enterprise, so we're just, we're just poking around the edges. And I think we're getting, we're, we're off to a good start, however, with your support for a priority-based budgeting approach. Eventually, if this strategic policy agenda works, you'll be having more discussions about having things wait or what to add and what to drop off. And that, I think, will take a couple of, couple of evolutions before we're there. And that's as much on staff as it is on the governing body to have that. So again, thank you for a very, for an excellent start. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.